Call the meeting to order. Barbara is on her way, but we've got discussion matters we can discuss before we need to take action. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 5:45.
I need to make a couple of adjustments to the consent agenda. I didn't see adjustments to the agenda on here.
Well, we can do adjustments to the agenda and we'll do that first and then we can do community input, too.
Okay. So 3.7, approved transfer of funds, I didn't actually put anything in your package, so I want to take that out and make that a action.
Do you, so you have it with you?
Yep.
We're going to take action on it, but just not as part of the consent?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And then 3.9 and 3.10, you also don't have, we're having some trouble getting bids lined up for those two, so I anticipate that we'll want to take action on those this summer, along with the Heinsberg playground site work project. So those three things, I'll probably be, either if we end up having another summer meeting, I'll try to put them then, otherwise I may be asking the board chair to use her summer authority for those three, but they'll be coming. They're anticipated.
Okay, so we're going to have, after discussion matters, we'll have one item for action matters, and that is 3.7, and we're taking off 3.9 and 3.10.
Correct. And one of the things that we talked about at our COLT meeting this week when we were reviewing the agenda was that at this particular meeting, we would add a category that would be summer authority and put in there the things that we anticipate.
Yes.
So, I mean, there would be no discussion because they're not happening yet, but then the board would realize, these are the things that the chair is likely to sign off on in the summer, so when you see it in September, it's not, oh, I had no clue this was going on.
I think we used to do that.
Not since I've been here, but I think it may be before. Anyways, we will do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other adjustments? Okay. Any community input? No? 2.0, discussion matters. 2.1, school resource officer. That's for Dave.
Who's preferencing the K-8 piece? Are you talking about everything or just the...
I can definitely ask.
Speak to the K-8 piece.
Okay.
So the last board meeting was asked to dig a little bit deeper into some of the nuances of what a proposal would look like for a school resource officer. Given the time of the year, I asked Tim Albertson to help me out with some of this work, because he's on the Public Safety Committee, and so he spoke to, on the back, you'll see some of the names of the folks he talked to, Colchester High School SRO, folks in the Sheriff's Department, Williston, Heinsberg, and Shelburne PD. So we came up with, after doing a little more research, basically three options that we could go with, and at this point, these three options are listed in terms of a preferential order. So option one would be partnering with the Heinsberg Police Department to hire and support an SRO, depending on the will of the town and the will of the Heinsberg Police Department, then talking with Shelburne or Williston to see if they would be interested in posting an officer, and then finally, we talked to the Chittenden County Sheriff's Department, who said they would be interested in developing a partnership with us. They currently work with Knott Mansfield, and basically contract with the schools for 175 days of the year. Some challenges with that is, would be that the local support isn't there necessarily like it would be with Heinsberg PD. They're having some trouble in staffing. They have staffing issues right now in general. I think it's tough to find people, and they're very hopeful about an upcoming class coming out of the police academy, but it seems like it's a tough time to recruit the folks they want to get.
Do you know if that extends beyond just the Sheriff's Department to, you know, other law enforcement agencies around Chittenden County? I mean, if it's purely the Sheriff's Department, then you, you know, you'd want to dig a little deeper in that if it's a, you know, countywide problem or, you know, area-wide problem.
My read was that it was more of an area-wide problem than anything. But again, that's quick discussions. I don't have any real data to back that up. Putting together a relatively sketch of a hiring process, all folks agreed that creating a team of stakeholders makes a lot of sense, including members from the Police Department to describe the ideal candidate first. They were described as a series of coffee talks at first, and then whichever department with which we want to work would post the position. There'd be a first-round interview with a collaborative hiring team, including stakeholders from the Police Department, students, community members, and that the initial focus would be on making sure you've got the person who fits culturally, and then, of course, the policing skills that we'd want to see. Following a first-round interview, then you'd do a second-round interview with me and with the Chief of Police, each person basically holding a veto power for a candidate in that position, but...
Like jury votes.
Yeah, likely not to need that. Duties are duties that we had discussed, developing contact points in each of the departments, no matter whether it's, whether it was Sheriff's Department, Shelburne, Heinsberg, Williston, it's going to be important to have connections to all local departments, developing a rapport with school community, students, faculty, those types of things, of course, providing protection, conducting safety assessments, serving as a general resource, also an educational resource, so plenty of classes to partner with, independent projects, along with, and I think this speaks to the K-8s, spending time within the K-8s and running educational programs there, the majority of the time at CVU, but also like an 80-20 split, 85-15 split, where they're doing local visits to schools.
And that, if I could just interject quickly, that matches the information right up on the K-8 principles and what they saw in, in what they thought would make sense.
Providing, of course, security and safety in some of our larger events that we've had others attend, such as winter carnival, you know, various graduation events, things along those lines. Serving as student resource teams, so public safety team, student support team, educational support teams, and then interagency meetings. We have several interagency meetings of various points for students, and it's always great to have a contact point there. Serving as a responding officer for anything that would happen criminally that we felt we needed to bring a school resource officer into.
Or fender benders in the parking lot.
Yep, could be fender benders in the parking lot. As has been known to happen on occasion. And then serving as a consultant and liaison to the leadership team. The other takeaways that Tim had was, again, some of the concern of trained officers, and it, hands down, just as the board had said, the importance of finding the right committed person, someone who matches culturally and someone who's invested in it. You certainly would not want to force an officer into the position who was not interested in doing it. And then just other little pieces of information that, you know, MMU contracting with Chittenden County for 175 to 183 days, something along those lines. So I don't think, there's a whole lot new here, but a little more investigation. Yep?
Do you have a sense of what Sheriff's Department would put that person for the balance of the year? And I know that was an issue raised with Heinsberg, which was okay if we only need them, or say 75, 80 percent of an FTE, and they were concerned about picking up the tab for the balance of that. So does, you know, the Sheriff's Department have enough demand for other summer things that having a person here for, you know, once a part of the year and then off they go for, you know, the summer somewhere?
Yeah, they, I think my sense was there's plenty of work to be done. So it was a little bit like what Officer Nysley described from Montpelier, where you come back into the department and...
Yep. So when we met with, you presented at the Heinsberg, a meeting in...
Is that work yet?
When was it? April? I don't know. It seemed like a long time ago, maybe February. So one of the...
It was cool. I remember that.
One of the concerns was that the Heinsberg, for example, Heinsberg Police Force is currently at what the community, oh, it was right after town meeting, because the question came up at town meeting, is the staffing adequate? And Chief Coss said, yes, staffing is currently adequate. So to add staffing for additional duties would have seemed odd for Heinsberg, for example. So perhaps part of the discussion could be posting as a 10-month position? Just putting it out there as, and then if that person wanted to fill up time, other than the 10 months, it might be substituting in other departments in the area? I don't know.
I almost think that it's important for this individual to go back into the community and continue to work in the community that they live in during the summer months. That way they're, because what's great about these positions is that typically you'll see, they're still police officers. They still belong to whatever department they came from. So they're still eligible to pick up overtime shifts. They're still eligible to pick up other events that typically require a police presence. So what's great about these types of positions is when, as they do that, the students are typically going to these events. So you have the same person that you see all school year going, and then over the summer you see him on a Friday or Saturday at your local, you know, conference on the, or concert on the green, that typically police don't have to staff during the winter months. So this person, if it's done right, is ingrained, knows the students who most need the attention from this type of person, so they need to continue that throughout the summer months. At least that's my opinion.
Yeah.
I think it's great that the question is, we can't force the Heinsberg community to pick up the 10 weeks in the summer. So I think that we're going to, Adam and I are going to have to get a little creative on that, but before we even start the conversations, we both, and Elaine, felt that we ought to have a pretty clear go from the board. So that's why we're kind of having this conversation now, pre-vote, right?
Right.
Because this is an action matter, but we wanted to make sure that we were on the right track in order to start having these kind of conversations, so that when we do come back to the board, we have something solid. So absolutely understand, I think that's a great, that's a great point, but it's also...
Well, and it doesn't mean that that wouldn't happen.
No, I couldn't agree more. When we're having these conversations, those are all things that I think we should explore.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't mean to be a little bit, just that we don't, we don't mean to know that we have a complete solution here, but finding that complete solution is going to involve talking to some people outside of the school system, and we ought to, we wanted a very clear direction from the board before we start doing that.
I think where we ended up last time was, there was, we needed clarity on what this position was going to cover. Was it going to be just the high schools? Do the K-8s each want one as well? So it sounds like we've got that answer. The K-8s want that intermittent connection, but the primary role would be this person at the high school. But if I can just back up one more, I think the other piece, I just want, I think it would be helpful just to have consensus that we do want an SRO in our school, in this, in the high school.
Are you asking Russ or are you asking the board?
I'm asking the board. I'm just looking around.
Looking at Russ.
I just think that that's really important, because I think as, if everyone is on board, we can go, it makes it a lot easier to go forward.
I'm on board.
I'm on board, too.
What do you think about a school resource officer? So I got going into this.
Well, from what was discussed a couple of months ago, he was a valuable resource, but I don't know what has been added in between now and, I'm sorry, I apologize for being frank.
Okay. I'm just kind of fleshing out some specifics.
Oh, okay. So, we're just talking generally.
I have no idea to pursue this track and to actually have a school resource officer in, at CVU.
Yeah. And I'm supportive of the position also. My concern is the perception of an imposition on the town of Heinsberg for the non-school days, and it was a chunk of days. And so however that can be worked out, I, because I don't see our school board supporting a salary for someone to be attending, serving as a police officer at town events, for example. I just don't see that as our role with our budget. I also don't see the town of Heinsberg picking up that extra allocation when the Chief Coss had just said in March, two roomful of town folks were at an adequate staffing point, so.
I think our job as a...
And I agree with you, I agree with your perspective, Brendan, I do. I just...
I think our job as a board is not to speculate about what the Police Department's will or will not do, but let Jean and the administration work through with them. And if we agree that we want to explore this opportunity, then that's what we're agreeing to. We're not approving or denying the, or rejecting, you know, a proposal right now. We just want you guys to look into it. And part of the big thing is...
I agree that we can't afford two months of a police officer who would just, like, building's empty. I've never seen it like this. What would they do?
A lot easier to keep safe.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that that's, you know, Jean and the administration's job to figure out what that looks like and bring it back to us. And then if it's not a, something we can live with, the conversation should not end there. That should be, the board's asking if we can do this, and Jean or whomever, maybe even a board member, goes back to the Police Department and we work to find a common ground.
But we wanted to make sure we had a framework that the board is...
I think a framework that you left out here is fine, and I think continued work to pursue options one, two, or three, and to understand, I recognize the sensitivity in Heinsberg. Arguably, this person should come from Williston. It's the biggest population, and if they are going to go back into a community and you want, you know, interaction with the students throughout the summer, well, most of them are in Williston. So I don't think that there's, to me, there's no foregone conclusion here that the best place to get this person and to staff the job is Heinsberg. So, you know, and it sounds like, you know, the Sheriff's Department, staffing issues aside, could be as good an option as any as far as that, that two months of the year, if you will, that is potentially problematic for any of the local town's budgets. So, yeah, I, I'm not sure that, you know, ultimately we'll end up with this or not, but it still, it's a good framework to continue to see what we can do.
And just to make myself comfortable, some personal thing, I can't, I hand it off my sheet, but just to be clear, this will be uniformed person, right, and he will carry a weapon? I just want everyone to make sure that's what...
And handcuffs.
And handcuffs and lollipops.
Don't they use zip ties now?
More, more SROs carry handcuffs than they do guns.
Interesting.
That's interesting.
All right, so we'll move forward and hopefully, because I feel there's some urgency here. I think the administration thinks that there's some urgency, but the most important thing's find the right person. But we're going to move forward and hopefully come back with a decision, an agenda topic with a decision.
Action item.
Action item. Thank you.
We didn't hear from Tim Albertson. I didn't know if there was an opportunity to hear more information or...
No, I consolidated it here.
Okay.
He basically discovered some more things. So he and I collaborated today, and I sat down and made a list of his discoveries.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was something else we needed.
One thing that I would be interested in is, I'm impartial whether it's uniformed or not uniformed, but what's best practice? What are other schools doing?
I mean, I...
Are you going to be able to create those relationships if somebody's walking around in a uniform or like...
Yeah. I think the modified uniform is the one that I preferred, so it's, it's like a polo shirt over, I mean, you have to wear a vest.
Yeah.
It's over the vest, but it doesn't have everything, you know, and a little camera here.
So somebody's a little bit more approachable.
Yeah, it doesn't look like the Batman belt, you know? I mean, it's just a little, that's probably...
Does, I think everything makes, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. I guess my questions are, it looks like there's a previous SRO at the Shelburne Police Department, so they've maybe...
Well, he's the chief now, so don't...
But where was, do we know where he went? Well, take him.
He was in Shelburne, and he was not officially, is that what you're talking about, when he was in Shelburne?
Tim got that information. I thought he was a former SRO at a different...
And that is possible, but while he was on the Shelburne, in the Shelburne Police Department not as chief, he did, on his own, spend time in Shelburne, and that was with the acknowledgement of the chief at the time and...
I guess my only other input is, then if Shelburne, Williston, and Heinsberg have never had an SRO before, and the Sheriff's Department has, I guess whether we can, whether we go with them or not, we don't need to recreate the real, but they might have a lot of, a wealth of information to guide us forward.
So are we looking for a motion to authorize CVSD administration to advance with exploring options for an SRO?
No, this is a discussion matter. So we just need to see the head nod so that we know that we're not wasting our time this summer.
And before we get to that, I just wanted to add one more voice to this choir. So Haley Chase is a 15-year-old from Heinsberg, and she wrote a poem that was in the Young Rogers Project that was published this week, and I edited. I just want to read a little bit so that you get a student voice at this discussion, because I think it's important. "If I die in a school shooting, politicize my death. Fight for our safety. Turn my funeral into a protest. If I die in a school shooting, battle until students and teachers are safe. Don't let my death become a statistic. Help kids go to school unafraid. Fight for all lost lives and make change be required. If I die in a school shooting, turn my ashes into a book and write the story of how my life should have looked."
I don't think I could have written that at 15, because we didn't have school shootings when I was writing it.
That's what's...
Okay. Jean, Adam, you guys have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 2.2 committees. So, the never-ending committee. We left the retreat kind of with a sense that we were going to have four committees next year, taking the communications committee and populating it between the other committees, and then what we didn't do is talk about how we were going to get those committees. And I kind of, this is my strong feeling, and I'm happy to be overridden, because again, this is a discussion matter, but I kind of feel like everybody should have the opportunity to change their committee, especially since we have the new committee, which I'm not sure what we're calling, whether it's the dashboard committee or the...
Or continuous improvement.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the name will be.
Well, we've had 25 percent turnover of board members, too.
Right, exactly. So I feel like everyone should have the opportunity to pick their committee. What it also means is that with four committees, we need three board members on the four big committees.
Can you identify what the four...
So we have policy, we have finance, I don't know, excuse me, we have HR, we have finance, we have indicators, and we have communications. Those are the Tuesday night ones. So maybe, how will that work Tuesday night?
So just wondering if like the communications committee, instead of calling it a separate committee, somebody in each of these committees is tagged to be...
Contributing to something.
And so it's really three committees, but there's a person on each of these committees who says, I raise my hand and I'll have that.
Yep.
Yes.
It'll just be easier to organize it, I think. Okay.
Yeah, so the communications committee, at least how I envisioned it, would effectively just go away. It'd be like a liaison to the communications person, speaks on behalf of their committee.
Okay.
Because what you don't want is, we're, I keep hearing, we're a small board, we're a small board. We need everybody, everybody, BODY counts. So you don't, I don't want to go sit at finance as the communications person, but not contribute to the finance committee.
Right.
Because you need, you need contributors.
So we're going to let the, each committee figure out who the person is who's going to communicate, or it could be rotating, or it could be whatever.
That's a proposal that's on the table?
Yeah.
To me, it's similar to the policy committee. Every single member, every, every committee needs to be cognizant of policy. But policy is not going to meet on Tuesday nights. They're going to meet whenever it works out for Mark and his team.
So...
Yeah.
Every Monday at 8:00.
So what...
But it's, it's a similar concept. So we, essentially, if the communications committee goes away, and there's a change-up to an indicators committee, then it's three committees, four people each.
So if people wouldn't mind, if you could just send me your priority, one, two, three, the committees that we're, we're on, I know you all want to be on finance.
Do you want a survey constructed?
It is the most awesome, no, I'm, I'm happy with an email. Just send me an email. One, two, three, what your priorities are. And if you do want to be on policy, that would be helpful. Policy, Superintendent Eval, what's the other one?
So we have...
I think it's just policy and Superintendent Eval are the other two. As additional or ad hoc? Yeah, they're more like, they're, they're, yeah. If you have an interest in serving on those, just make that notation down, too. And then we'll make, hopefully make sure it all gets balanced out.
And the indicators committee, from what I'm reading, from what we've done prior discussions about it, we will need a new charge for that committee, a formal charge.
I...
And we should probably reauthorize the charges.
I think we can probably do that in September, because I think the indicator committee actually is going to need to meet to come up with their, their charge. We have a, I have a global idea.
A recommendation for a charge?
Yep.
Yep.
So, is everyone okay with that process?
Yeah. Do you mind reminding us what are the days when they meet?
The regular committees, Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month.
So, but if we want everyone to try and attend one all year, you know, at least attend more than one, then other committees are going to have to meet another time.
Oh, I think that was when we were all, were first on the board, to go to the different committees to get a sense of what each committee was, with the expectation that you would then choose a committee.
Oh, you'll have to...
So, yeah, then you, then you become a member of a set committee.
So finance and facilities, this new indicators are continuous improvement, and HR will all meet at the same time on the first Tuesday of the month at our regular board meeting time, six. So you need to pick one of, I think the intent, what you're saying was that everyone will pick one of those three?
Yep.
And that's what you want, the one, two, three?
Yep. And I'll, I'll put out a regular email to that. I didn't want to do that just without, you know, getting feedback.
And then the policy one and the other one are more ad hoc, and they meet at a different time entirely. So you can do one of those three and another one.
Ideally, this policy would have a regular time. It's just not going to be Tuesday, you know, the first Tuesday of the month.
Correct.
Yeah. I would say about the policy committee, it's not really ad hoc, because it's really an important committee.
True, it's not ad hoc. It's a standing committee.
It's a standing committee that meets at a different time.
Right. And it involves more than board members.
Right.
Committee meetings are...
Yes.
Yeah. Is there a way to find the agendas for these meetings?
The committee meetings?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sandy?
They're all posted.
Okay. Okay, because I'm just thinking that especially the policy committee, there might be times where we might want to weigh in on the...
But we had talked about recruiting, Adam's not here now, but we had talked about recruiting someone, a student for that committee.
Yeah. Okay.
Are they, are they open meetings?
But they meet 8:00 in the morning?
Or are they, you know, meetings that are open to the public?
That's what they are.
And so as far as, you know, opportunity for people to weigh in, that's not necessarily there.
Right.
And, you know, I think we can, we have the opportunity to be a little more disciplined as far as coming up with agendas, but I'm not sure if minutes are necessarily, you know, part of the public record for these committees as well as it relates to, you know, open meeting laws. I don't know. So we need to understand some of these things better, and there's some things we can do a better job on, but it's not necessarily that, you know, the public is invited to come to the policy meetings to give us input.
Right. So for, in terms of what meeting notes you need from these committees, you need to know what time you met, who was there, any action taken, and the substance of the discussion. Not like Russ said this and the other one said that, and there was just, just... So if it's policy committee, it happened on Monday, the 18th of September. These four board members were there, as were, you know, Mark and Adam and whoever else, and the policies discussed were A, B, C, because no decisions are getting made at any of these. That comes back to here.
Yep.
And that's when there would be an opportunity for the public to weigh in, because you'd have audience and communications, and they'd say, this is what I think about policy. have audience and communications, and they'd say, this is what I think about policy G6 or whatever.
Yep, and they will be discussion items, and then subsequently action items at this level of board meeting.
So Kyle, were you thinking more of an opportunity to give input or to, to policies or to craft the policies?
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking that there, I don't know how often policies come up that pertain directly to students.
Directly or indirectly, they all do.
Capitalization of assets, for instance.
I would say, because what has been requested to be discussed, that currently we would be discussing some that you would find interesting.
Okay.
Happy to add you to email list, and, and, again, they, we, they, because it's their committee, had discussed having a student involved, so.
Okay, then would that be a student on the board, or?
That would make sense.
It would make sense. And just to remind everybody, Lynn and I next year are gonna be meeting with the student council and with the principal's think tank or whatever. Once a month, we'll meet with some group. That would also be an opportunity, if there's a policy that happens to specifically, very directly address students, for you and I to hear, hey, what do you think about this?
So because this is a committee of the board, Kyle, I think there's a precedent that the person on the policy committee would be, you know, the student rep who sits on the board.
Okay. So.
And there are only two of you, so you'd have to fight over that.
Tooth and nail.
That and fence. Okay, so I'll get that email out tomorrow, and I will hound you, or I'll put you on your third choice if you don't respond timely. There you go.
Can I just, just weigh in, just to make sure people understand the, and the finance committee folks can weigh in as well, but I wanted to clarify, perhaps a misconception is that the finance committee doesn't set the budget, right? The finance committee really, the point of it is to make sure that, that as a, there's a group of people who are willing to deep dive into the numbers that are getting presented by administration, but if there are changes to the current programs, or staffing, or anything else, that comes through Elaine's presentation to the board. The finance committee doesn't see it first, so, I mean, as exciting as the finance committee is, and I, you know, and facilities, and facilities.
Yes, committees ever.
So we do two really exciting things. It, if, if there's a perception out there that the finance committee is crafting the budget and bringing that to the board, that's not true, and I just want people to think that and get on the committee and be disappointed.
And to take that a step further, the board is the one who's giving the finance directive on what we can do and what we can't do, and what increase we can experience like that, so we're really just kind of trying to make all the numbers fit.
Yeah, I think you said it best, Brendan, at a, at a committee meeting. The board isn't, or the committee isn't building the budget.
Yep.
We're just trying to understand it. Okay. 3.0, do I have a motion to approve?
You gonna do my action item, or are you gonna come?
That's 4.0.
Oh, sorry. I wrote it in, I wrote it in above, sorry.
3.0 consent to general, do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 4.0, do I have a motion to approve the transfer of funds from the general fund to the construction fund?
I'll move.
Second? Discussion?
Well, just to clarify, the amount is $48,150, Sandy? And essentially what this is, is the, the Shelburne, principals at the Shelburne School have scrolled away some of their general fund money to put towards a cafeteria renovation that we couldn't, wouldn't otherwise quite live up to the standards that they had hoped for, so they found the money, we found, you know, we had money set aside in our construction fund, we would've put it together and do a really nice job in their cafeteria, so that's what it's for.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Okay. All right. Do I have a, what, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a question on the floor, and then here does, it sounded like you took some things out. Did the approval include frequenting the Wi-Fi access points?
Yes. Oops, sorry. Anything else? Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Will you then be responsible for all of these signatures?
Yeah, and I'll get it back to you tomorrow. What, what, what am I, actually, before I say that, what am I?
Well, so just, the one thing you wanna make sure, to Jean's point, is there are several of these that are, you need, you need multiples.
Right. I need six, six board signatures.
So even though there are just least four lines?
Do we do that right now, so we do it right?
That would be awesome.
Is it just one?
Start over there, and you start over there.
So I don't wanna get an email, hey Brendan, can you drive to the office?
I know, that's the thing.
All right, so I'm just signing wherever there's a red thing.
I think it's just me.
Five, six.
Oh, and there, and here's yours.
Yep.
Five, six.
We need three directors orders. Who is the director?
Clerk, that's Jeff.
Actually, what we decided was that the clerk is already approving all these things, so it doesn't have to be the clerk who signs this, just somebody.
Okay, I just need three of these, so you two and one more.
We always need, we need everybody.
Jean, what's your feeling on blue and black pens?
Seriously?
What, green?
Well, I like the, the concept of blue, so to know that it's not a photocopy, but I just photocopy things in color, and then.
That was a rule in the office I worked at. No original documents in black ink.
Right. That's why I asked.
Some people are more sticklers.
Probably depends on the importance of the document that they're signing.
Jean, can you pass it down? Need just one more.
Yep. One more signature here?
That's done.
I think you're gonna have it all done.
Yay! And then we'll just go into executive session.
This goes this way, right?
I knew it was this one, but I thought he's in it before.
I need to sign the two.
Sandy, we're gonna have.
And you and me both. This is going that way.
Same thing.
It almost took Megan out. The tour stop almost took Megan out.
I know.
Nice. Old school.
Is it across?
It is.
Those over time.
How long have you had it?
I don't know, I've got probably three of these.
I know, that's when I got mine.
I had one for years, I mean, I mean, really, honestly, years.
Eventually, they kinda wear out.
I lost it.
I probably had this one for five or 10 years, I've got a couple of others that are, you know, in worse shape.
Love to go and dig, look for mine, that's why I was.
You should sign it, because there are only six of you. We need all of you.
I want August to come now, I know August is coming.
I just signed two sets of documents, aren't there more that are coming in?
No, that was.
Those are the only two that needed all the board. We needed one that needed three signatures, and we got it.
Okay.
And we needed a bunch that needed your highness's signature.
Okay. That's why I brought my blue pen.
I peeled up my breakfast this morning.
Is this your cup? No, that's not mine. I'm waiting for everybody to finish signing, and then we're, and that, we haven't gone yet, no.
Is that done, Sandy?
Not yet, we're just signing documents, but we're, we're done, we're gonna.
You can put us on pause.
Put us on pause.
But then we're gonna leave the room.
Yeah, we're gonna leave, and we're not coming back.
So I think you're done.
Then you just sign that deed of your own free act.
Yes, I'm not notarizing it tomorrow.
Been on the water?
I stood over her and said, you.
Okay.
I was fine running into you guys this morning.
We have been doing that for, those were all CCS, so since first grade, all of our kids have graduated from college, now that's how long we have done that.
Yeah, so it's one of. Connie and I get together maybe like six times a year, and that's one of the spots, and the other one is.
Oh, did you, too?
Hen of the Woods for research. And we're just saying, we should have like another third.
Wait, that's just, we do it then, and then we usually do, when the kids went back to school in the fall, we'd go for.
So after school was done, and then after school started.
Started, yes. Because it's such a beautiful spot, yeah.
Sideways.
Usually, yeah, side.
By the time we left, the, the sun was up, it was beautiful. All right, take care, I'll talk to you later. Bye.
Bye. Have a good night.
Can I have a motion to enter executive session?
Oh, well, let's go in the other room, let's go in the other room. Actually, we need a motion to enter executive session to go.
For the purpose of?
For the person, purpose of superintendent evaluation.
Okay, let's help Sandy with our name tags.